Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to open this commissioners meeting, dated September fifteenth, showing all three commissioners present, county attorney in New York. Uh, we're gonna have this meeting, we'd like to have the department head reports, and we'll be back on with the sort of here last time, John, we'll start with you.
All right. Please.
Thank you, John.
So, I'll start with a permit request tonight, uh, twenty-five, twenty-eight. And I'll probably butcher the name, Patrick Mirana is requesting a permit for directional bore under three seventy-five east at six seven eight two north for electrical service. I believe he was gonna be three foot under the ground.
Can y'all give it up?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve permit number twenty-five, twenty-eight for John.
Select. Motion made and seconded, approve the permit, all in favor. Motion carries three oh.
Um, as far as work activities, the guys have been patching holes, grading gravel roads, mowing, they are wrapping up the third mowing for the season. Cutting brush with the brush cutter, also going out with hole saw and stuff and cutting. Uh, and then they did start, uh, shouldering community crossing roads today. They got two fifty south out of Kiwanah, paved there at the end of last week. They started, uh, shouldering that. Uh, E and B's down there paving five fifty right now, Star City Blacktop, and then two, keep going south, following right up.
You putting stone or millings on them?
Millings. And then, uh, E and B plans to follow up with, uh, pavement markings into this week, first to next. So those projects should be completed here in a week.
Not a drivel part of it, it's really nice.
Very nice, they're just doing a nice job, so. I've been getting a lot of complaints because of how long the project's taken, but I'm also today starting to get a lot of compliments on how nice things look, so. I think, and it's the same people, so. I think overall, it's a good project and good work. Kiwanah shop, you know, we've talked about putting a new roof on it, we did get that replaced last week, it looks good. I did see the metal that come off, and it, it was time. I can see why it was leaking in places after it came off, see these spots. Uh, Bridge one sixty-one, uh, the beams have been set, uh, they, uh, poured concrete to the approaches there last week, I think they're planning on doing the deck, the steelwork's done, I think they're planning on doing the deck yet this week, or net, guardrails, uh, looks like they're pretty well on track for October first, so. I know Dave's been out there.
Seeing that crane that they set those beams with was something else.
Six hundred ton crane, it was huge.
Beams are monsters. I don't think we're having trouble crane trucks over that bridge's fault.
I don't think so either. I think each beam weighed ninety-three thousand pounds. That, that project's been going very well with little, little difficulties today. Do you have the speed ordinance that we've talked about, uh, in the past? This is for South Wall Bash Road, turn the net to a forty mile an hour speed zone.
Is that right?
I guess if you guys wanna do two readings on that, or, and then we'll have to do a third on another meeting.
Two tonight, one next meeting, that's acceptable?
Anyway, this would create forty mile an hour speed limit from US thirty-one on South Wall Bash Road, Mount Zion, nowhere, we're up there, five hundred east.
And what's the penalty for that if they?
We've never, we discussed this earlier, we've never set a penalty on any of our ordinances in the past. And I know Travis, you mentioned it falls under an IC code.
We've always written, anytime there's been an altered speed limit, we've always written it under the IC code.
As a ticket?
Yeah, so, we've never written on the ordinance, I mean, the ordinance, the ordinance changes that speed limit, but we write it under the IC code, so.
As Kathy had asked about, uh, publishing the ordinance, and if the ordinance carries a penalty, then we have to publish it. So I, I guess, splitting hairs, we could say the ordinance isn't carrying the penalty, it's the IC code. So then we would not have to publish it, we'd just have to have the three readings.
Okay.
That's what boys gotta pass, yeah.
Right, okay.
So that's, so just reading, the three readings is all we need to do as long as we pass it?
Right.
Okay, go ahead and get the...
That's what you wanna do.
Okay. I didn't know, I was gonna let you get finished up if you wanted to, and then we'd do this after that?
I can go, I can go on if you want.
Why don't you go ahead, and then we'll, we'll pick this up after you're done.
Next thing I had, it's a uniform contract with Cintas, and now that, uh, they have to go through the county for all of our, um, contracts. Basically, what, we've been using Cintas, I think we've used them for ten years now, continuously. In the past, we filed with Cintas back and forth, but we, they've been doing us a good job. Uh, they're offering us state pricing, which would reduce us, um, sixty-eight, seventy-four percent on some, seventy-eight percent on some of our products that we're purchasing now. Huge savings, huge savings. I do have, and I think I sent it with you, uh, but, uh, we'd like to sign up for that, it's a sixty-month contract. Which in the past, we've always done two years with them, but I don't foresee any issues. It's that we've been with them for ten now.
I had a little trouble understanding some of that, the way you were pricing, but I figured you knew what it was.
I can give you an example. Like cargo shirts right now, or shorts, uh, the sixty-three cents currently, new price would be twenty cents, sixty-eight percent savings. Carhartt pants, right now is a dollar eighteen, with the new pricing, it'd be thirty cents. I mean, now.
That's considerable savings.
So basically, our service would continue just like it is, we'd just be receiving the state discount. Like I said, I don't see anything under sixty-eight percent on our savings, most of them are higher than sixty-eight percent.
Looks like it's got on here Fulton County Highway, so you need to sign it, so we need to give you permission to sign it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to give John permission to sign the Cintas contract, was that, I can't, sixty months?
Five years.
Yep.
Motion made and seconded for John, giving John permission to sign the Cintas contract for five-year agreement for uniform pricing? All, all in favor? Kerry's three oh.
Uh, and the last thing I wanted to bring up was advertising for fall bids. Last year, we did November eighth. Particular date that would work good for you guys to do that this year?
He's probably as busy or as open as the other.
Yeah.
Brian, check and see what he's got.
November eighth was last year.
What's a Friday?
Seventh.
You know, the seventh, we can do October thirtieth, or thirty-first, whatever you guys, whatever works for you guys.
Okay, you wanna do the seventh?
We can do the seventh.
I can do the seventh.
All right, November seventh, at ten-thirty, is that what you wanna do?
Yep. Works for me. And I believe that's everything I had for you gentlemen.
Okay, sounds good, John, thank you. See, it's about this to us, go ahead. It's okay with you guys to do a first reading tonight, a second reading tonight, and a third next meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay. Before the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, and it'd be, is today's date or two weeks?
Oh nine, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, ordinance number oh nine, one five, two oh two five. Ordinance establishing the speed limit on South Wall Bash Road near Rochester, Rochester Township. Reporters, the Fulton County Highway Department and the Fulton County Sheriff has completed a traffic study, and the South Wall Bash Road is described in subsection one, is therefore ordained that the speed limit set forth in the subsection one precedes all prior speed limits for that, at this location. If, if further ordained, Fulton County Highway Department posts appropriate speed limit signs to advise motorists to the speed limit at this location. Subsection one, speed zone for South Wall Bash Road, forty mile an hour, uh, speed zone on South Wall Bash Road, starting at US thirty-one, continuing for eight thousand nine hundred thirty-five feet, ending the speed zone at County Road five hundred east. This ordinance is in effect on passage in prior publication.
I'll make a motion, you do the second reading by title only.
Select.
Okay, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, second reading here now, before the Fulton County Board of Commissioners, ordinance number oh nine, one five, two oh two five, with subsection one, speed zone for South Wall Bash Road. There's second reading.
Okay, that's how we do it.
Okay, there, Kerry.
Good evening, Kerry.
Updates right now, courthouse. I did get the information that Kathy was talking about today, I did get it over to her, on serial numbers, model numbers of everything that was hit by lightning.
Okay, good.
To the best of my knowledge, in the years that I could get on it. Like I said, um, the furnace, I'm still running that basically by hand, I know that we've got some good warm days coming, so hopefully, I'm still praying that the core gets to me soon, um, and get these parts in there. We're still having the issues with the Corson, and, uh, they're still trying to figure out and get a new panel for their, they just keep finding more and more stuff that keeps, every time they replace something, something else goes bad, so I'm, I'm adding to it as fast as I can, till I get the information, so, that's where I'm at on that. Other than that, I just have, wanna know if you want this on new business, or do you want me to talk about the, the bids that I have?
Do it now?
Just go ahead now.
Let's do it, get it over with.
You want me to open these up and just do them, is that right, is that correct? Or, is that how we do it, or you guys open them?
I can.
Okay, there's actually four of them.
Wow.
Uh, one is, uh, same person, and, um, she wanted to set it up a little different.
This is from my mom, my mom made?
My main maid.
Main maid, okay.
My main maid, is this, this, they're out of Cosiaska town.
Okay.
Um, they're fairly large, um, they take care of quite a bit of customers in Cosiaska and a few in Fulton.
Okay, and this is for cleaning the, uh...
Courthouse, courthouse and probation building.
All three buildings?
All three buildings, and it's a, it's a five-day thing, Monday through Fri- Monday through Friday, with the option on Friday to come in and clean on Sunday for a fuller clean. Um, they've got it detailed in the letter of what they would take care of and what they would do, and, uh, and then...
All after hours, right?
Yes, this, this one is all after hours.
This is start, this is after three PM?
Yep. Cause I told them if, uh, three PM is okay, because we're getting down, you know, a lot of the courtrooms are empty, I said, empty spaces, you're allowed to start cleaning empty spaces, hallways, courthouses, that kind of stuff.
Okay. So available discounted services, extra would be exterior window washing, concrete, exterior pressure washing, emergency flood, hazardous bio spills, or electrostatic fires.
And that's the extra stuff that they do?
All extra stuff.
Yeah, that, that's extra stuff that they will do.
Everything else is...
Yep.
Okay. I am looking for a price, Kerry. Specials.
Should be at the very, is it not at the very...
There it is, right at the bottom. A hundred and five thousand, forty-nine dollars. My main maid.
My main.
Okay. Reinhold's Cleaning LLC.
And that's a, a local young lady that lives here in Fulton County, here in Rochester, actually.
Okay. She's getting different bids, is she?
She's actually giving you different options for different bids, is what she was telling me.
I'm back.
I believe, like, one of them is the five-day, um, just like main maids, and...
So we wanna do the five to compare them all to make sure apples to apples, right?
Yeah, and then, and then she has options for you guys if you want something different. Where she talked about possibly putting in a lower bid of, and it would save us, she was saying somewhere around thirty thousand dollars, instead of doing five days, she would do three days, but on, um, Tuesdays and Thursdays, she would still come in and do like trash and cardboard and stuff, and touch up bathrooms.
That's three times a week, five, plus five days.
Is that there in practice, right?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is five days all the way through. Okay, the first bid, she's got reference number one hundred, uh, it is for three times a week, uh, office cleaning, restrooms, common area maintenance, and trash removal, uh, being run day, Wednesday, Friday, or weekend, seventy-five thousand dollars.
And she has a second bid, then there's a second bid, the...
Yeah, it's a bid number one oh one, uh, three times a week for office cleaning, restrooms, common area, uh, and maintenance, and then trash removal, five days a week. It is for eighty-five thousand.
We're gonna get all confused here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's...
I'm just reading that, this is...
Okay.
Okay, and this is all five days, she does it all, hundred and five thousand. So, those are the three bids that she's got. She's got another envelope.
There's two there?
Yeah, she's got two envelopes.
Um, I think she, maybe she handed me two, so that I'd have one in front of me to see kinda what...
The same thing?
It might be the exact same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just so that I could see, yeah.
We'll just give you that one back if you wanna...
This is Doll's Cleaning Service.
Doll.
They're out of Plymouth, and they take care of, um, several, several first source banks. They take care of all Fuze Racing Tire, Coca-Cola, and a few other places.
Okay, she's got, where, details of service, uh, client will supply all equipment, temples, trash bags, if necessary. All specifications above will be the same for the courthouse, annex, and probation buildings. She's got, uh, three thou- I suppose these are monthly bids, the three thousand a month for the courthouse, twenty-five hundred for each the annex and probation buildings, that's, she got here twelve, so thirty-six thousand for the courthouse, thirty thousand for the annex and probation office, total ninety-six thousand dollars a year.
So ninety-six for all three buildings?
Ninety-six for all three buildings for a year.
Five days a week.
So, we may wanna kinda take those, look them over.
You wanna have, well, we need to...
We need it, need them done by...
So if Kerry wants to look, Kerry wants to look them over, or somebody wanted to look them over?
She looked, they sent me some copies, but with no pricing, so that I could look over what they wanted.
Okay, okay.
You know, as far as that, because I told them it had to be a sealed bid for you guys, so I just didn't have the pricing in front of me.
So, what do you think, I mean?
I actually like all three of them that I talked to.
Think they're pretty much apples to apples?
For the most part, yes, I do, um, and, and I'll be honest, I did like the other one saying the, the three days and saving us money too, because I figure, I think, once the place is clean, it stays clean, and then if you're coming back in on Tuesday and Thursday, and you're emptying and trashing, tidying up bathrooms for the price we're saving, that's just my opinion, but that's a good deal too. So, but I'm totally okay with any of it that we choose. I don't know any of them personally, so, and I don't know anybody really...
Reinhold's was the one that was local, is that...
Yeah, her name's Danielle Reinhold, I guess she lives, uh, out by Petty Drive area. But I don't, like I said, I don't know her either.
Did any of them have a problem with starting pretty quick?
Two of them said, which would have been my main maid and Reinhold said they would start immediately, as soon as possible if we wanted to, and that's just getting background checks done, you know, I gotta get them done first. Um, and Doll's Cleaning Service, she said that they would do it, but it could be October fifteenth before they could do a start date.
Okay.
The only reason I worry about that is because we've already got a thirty-day notice of October...
October second.
Yeah, October second's our last.
Okay.
That's the only reason I have a concern with that.
And that was Doll's?
And that was Doll's, yes.
Okay. And none of them had problems with you committing to a background check, correct?
Oh yeah, they were all fine with that, cause they said that they have background checks on all the other ones they do.
Okay.
And, you know, like I said, I, I main maid and Doll's, they do banks, so I already know that they're gonna pass their background checks.
Okay, so I guess what we need to discuss is whether we wanna stick with the five times at a hundred and five thousand, or what would that be thirty thousand dollars savings of going three times a week?
Well, if you take that, I, Holly can...
If you take that, you've gotta have them rebid it for that, cause you're not comparing bids to bids.
Apples to apples.
Right.
I, I mean, I didn't know she was gonna do that, she did that on her own, so...
Right, right, but if you're gonna, if you're interested in that, then you've gotta go back to the other two and say, look, we have, we need a bid for...
Now, if those have been out and open on the air, they're gonna know what to bid, so we have to have all three of them rebid for three days a week?
Yep.
I would say yes, they need to submit...
Because otherwise they can...
Give them the specifications of what you want them to bid on.
And them were your contracts, is that correct?
Yeah, they, uh, I gave all of them the, those specifications that they went off.
Right, and then that, and then Reinhold's just chose to do...
She just chose to do that on her own, because...
Right, so either you...
Okay, either you...
Throw those two out...
We ain't got time to...
And compare bid to bid to bid, or you have to put it back out there and let the other ones bid.
Now, what are we paying then, roughly ninety-six?
Ninety-five, ninety-four to ninety-five right now is what we're paying. Ninety-four, the exact amount.
Those two were, for five days a week, is virtually the same bid.
One of them's thirty-two dollars difference.
Yeah, thirty dollars.
Right.
But one of them's from Fulton County, and the other's from Cosiaska, I lean towards your Fulton County.
If you like to keep, you know, in, in the...
I mean, that's my thinking, you guys tell me what you think.
Yeah, well, then you have the Plymouth one.
Can, can we take a little...
She can't start until, they can't...
Say that, say that again? Oh, Doll's is ninety-six thousand, yes.
But they can't start till the fifteenth of October.
But they can't start till time.
Oh, okay.
So what do, can we, is that, is that a legal excuse or not?
It always indicates that you don't have to pick the low bid if you have specific reasons for not doing so. So a specific reason can be, you know...
Yeah, that's right, Doll's is ninety-six thousand, that's a pretty good difference, really.
Yeah.
Nine thousand dollars.
Yep.
Yeah, so...
But we're only two weeks possibly without a cleaning service.
But what do we do? What do you think, Brian?
Well, I mean, I wish she hadn't put that in there, because now it gives you cost pause. You know, I mean, because there, there could be a significant savings. I mean, if Doll's can't, if, if, if we're gonna take the low bid, and, and they can't start till November...
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth.
Or after.
I mean, so we have, we have time to have them rebid it.
But do, could we do that a cleaning service?
Well, but I'm just saying, we're gonna go with that one regardless, and, and if we have to take the low bid, so we might as well rebid it, and then, and our start day's not gonna be too much further, I mean, if we rebid it next, we got, what, a week?
We got two weeks till our next meeting.
Yeah, two weeks, so I mean, either way, we're...
Your forty-day notice is October second.
Yeah, yeah, either...
So if you go October fifteenth...
Either way, we're only two weeks without a cleaning service.
So who's gonna, yeah, what are you gonna do about that?
Brian, don't do the trash?
Yeah, Brian'll do it.
No, I'm just kidding. I would hope officers could maybe take the trash.
Take the trash out for a couple of weeks, but...
Do it now.
But I don't know, that's up to you guys, I mean, I'm...
Dave, what do you wanna do?
Do you see a problem with the three-day thing that she threw out there? I mean, is, you, you have an issue that, I mean, think this may not get cleaned, or do you think it's, I mean, cause that's a significant savings if...
Thirty thousand's a pretty good chunk of money.
Yeah, I, I mean, I talked to a few people and asked, you know, that, you know, she talked to me about different things and ideas, and, I mean, I don't totally have an issue with it, no, but I do think that if it goes to three days, I mean, I definitely want trash and I don't, I want the bathrooms cleaned.
Oh yeah.
And was that all for seventy-six, or was there an extra fee for that? It was, that was the fee, yeah, okay.
I mean...
I'm just telling you...
I like the savings.
And you gotta be rebid it.
We gotta rebid.
Yep.
How much time do we have to allow them to rebid?
Well, they're gonna take them long, we've already had it.
I know, but I mean, how long?
Well, we got, our next commissioners meeting...
Two weeks.
Or, I guess...
No, it's three weeks, now I gotta look, and it's not till October sixth is our next meeting.
We could call another meeting.
Yeah, October sixth is the next meeting, so...
If, if you think you can get a rebid in a week, we'll, we'll call a meeting sometime next week and, and open bids.
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it, I'll ask them if they'll do it, I'll ask them.
Is that long enough to give them, Holly, a week?
Yeah, they should be able, and then you just, but you have to give them those specifics so that it's equal...
Yeah, I will.
To that, okay?
We're not gonna be on anything, we're gonna be short with two weeks regardless, I mean, cause they can't start till the fifteenth anyway, so...
Okay.
Can any of them start?
Two of them can start, two of them said they'd start tomorrow, if I wanted them to.
All right, well, then, yeah, let's rebid those.
So, uh...
Sorry.
I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we rebid the cleaning service for the three-day, Kerry can write the specs, um, so they're all identical.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, that we, uh, go with the rebid on the cleaning service with the specs of three-day a week cleaning with two-day...
Send it to Reinhold also, make them rebid it, so that all of the specs you have written, they have the exact same piece of paper.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries three oh.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thanks, Kerry.
Sorry, took so much time.
No, you're good, Kerry.
We may do that. Okay. Go down, Brittany.
Chase a smile.
Good evening.
Evening, Brittany.
So as I advised at the last meeting, we've started, um, the protocol planning for the fire, so we're still underway with that, we're basically building, um, the fire group, which I guess I don't wanna just say it's fire chiefs, it's, you know, or they're designees, whoever they want. We are planning to hopefully go live, like, early February, if I haven't told you that already. So we're just preparing and gearing up for what this looks like, setting timelines. One thing one of the fire, um, chiefs had brought up is taking a look again at these fire territories, they've been the same since I started back in two thousand and seven, so it might be time, especially in some areas, to kinda re- look at the boundary line, just to make sure that it's where they should be, so, doesn't mean anything's gonna change, but at least bringing it to the table to see if there is something that needs modified. Most of the, maybe in the Albee Township area, to where, they think that maybe Rochester's coming over a little bit further than what is necessary, but we'll look at that and see if it needs to go anywhere there. I have purchased what's, is Protocol forty-one, so this is a caller in crisis, this is firsthand caller, um, that has mental health issues or, or something to where they're in a crisis. Protocol forty-one is on the EMD side, the medical side. We can't go live with it until every dispatcher in the center has done the course, which is a four-hour course, um, to be certified in that for it to go live, so that would be one call that we wouldn't transfer. It's pretty in-depth training as far as like mental health goes, and I, I hope we never have to use it, but I think it's gonna be a good tool to have in the box, that's four hours that... but I think it's gonna be a good tool to have in the box, that's four hours that we're trying to get everyone. I just purchased, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, so a lot of them have already finished it, so we might be going live on that quicker than, than I thought we would, so. In addition to that, I think I mentioned we purchased that artificial, is it artificial?
AI.
AI, so that's obviously where they're gonna be taking, you know, pretend nine-one-one calls. I heard one of the trainees in there doing it the other day, and it really seemed to help him quite a bit. So, that's a great tool to have too, as far as continued training on all three disciplines. With that being said, yesterday before ten AM, I had two employees, it was a busy morning. One had resigned effective immediately, he was one of our trainees, it just, this job wasn't cut out for him, and he decided to part ways and do something else, which that happens. And then another one was a full timer, we hate to see him go, he was a fantastic employee, but she's taken a job that's four dollars more an hour and she gets to work from home, so I can't compete with the funds that they get, unfortunately. So, some big blows here lately to us as far as employees, yeah. With that being said, HR posted the job today in-house, and then in a week from today, we'll open it up to the public, so. We start the process all over again.
Both jobs or this one?
Um, two full-time positions.
She posted, do them, okay.
Yep. So, this is obviously my assistant Jennifer Duff, on October fifteenth, she'll be here for twenty-four years, so she's a veteran of nine-one-one, kinda learning the ropes, so we're ripping off the Band-Aid and have her come here to see how the meetings go. And next, next month, she'll be in here by herself, because I'll be out of the office. So, we're just, wanted to introduce her formally.
Did you tell her she's gotta give a speech?
Oh, she does. We'll, we'll have some phone conversations, amp her up, she'll be fine. They'll be fine. So, I printed out some materials for you. The state of Indiana was the front line of making nine-one-one consider first responders versus secretarial. So, Indiana is like the, the trailblazer for making it to where it should be for nine-one-one operators and just getting the recognition that they need. But some big news with that is the US Senate has now passed a bill that nine-one-one across the nation will be recognized as first responders and not clerical or secretarial. So, that's a big deal, obviously, we have to get through the House, but we're making progress in ways that we haven't made before when it comes to the government recognizing us of more than what we're credited to be. So, that's, that's big news, I just wanted to give you some literature on what that means, and we're making waves in nine-one-one, which is great, because, no offense to secretaries, everyone's fantastic, but we have a little bit more than secretary duties to deal with on a daily basis. Behind that, you'll see, this really doesn't apply to you, I just wanted to keep you up to date on what's going on. It's basically just a brief job description of what quality assurance is, which I'll be taking to the council tomorrow night. It's just basically, I mean, the quality assurance has to be done, these calls have to be reviewed, they have to be scored to make sure that people are staying within compliance. The quality assurance has always been budgeted, I don't, I can't even tell you how many years. So, the question is, the way that the, it's been written before was it was just medical, because at the time, that's all that we had was medical quality assurance, because that's the only discipline that we have. Now, we're evolving into police and fire. Long story short, the job description doesn't change. The, the job description is the exact same for police as it is fire, as it is medical, there's, the only thing you're doing is you're, you're scoring a different discipline. So, when it comes to the quality assurance supplemental, I just wanted to give a brief job description of what that looks like universally between all three disciplines. It's, it's the exact same thing, it just depends on which discipline you're scoring at the time. So, like I said, that doesn't necessarily apply to you, but that's something I bring into the council tomorrow, is just an explanation of what the quality assurance is, why it's important as far as accountability, and making sure that the dispatchers are within compliance with every single call regardless of the discipline. So, along with that, I've been queuing fifteen or more calls, doesn't sound like a lot, but basically, the QPR program that we have that was purchased when we bought these disciplines is for me to score these calls. It just happens to be me now, I wanted to make sure that the dispatchers become acclimated before I assign somebody else as a queue. As soon as I can assign someone else as a queue, it's gone, I'm, I'm over it, so. With that being said, the QPR program is very pleased with the progress of the dispatchers, and, you know, it's a learning curve for, for me as a queue and a call taker, I'm queuing my own calls, which is interesting, which wouldn't be something that I'll do in the future, I won't be able to queue my own calls, but for the sake of consistency, they advise that we're right where we should be, even though we're not seeing like high, high compliance, we're exactly where we should be at this point in the process, so we're not far behind, we're not far ahead, but they're, they're pleased with where we're at, so. We queue these calls from complacency to the protocol, to customer service, to gaps in a call. We wanna make sure we don't have gaps that would produce, you know, freelance questions. I mean, it goes beyond where you guys are probably interested in, but anyways, they're scoring to make sure that I'm in compliance and I'm scoring things correctly and not missing something. So, good news, we're, we're on target, so I'm pleased with that. Um, let's see, I met with the organizer, I don't know what her title is, of the Kewana Fall Festival on Friday, just reviewed the emergency plan. I think, I mean, it's the same plan they always have, they just carry it over, so I didn't see any issues with that. I did have, I am gonna retype some contact numbers for her to tu- attach with her plan, and as soon as I get that done, I'll email that to everybody, that way they have it. So, Kewana Fall Festival is next week, from the twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth in Kewana. They have a hometown heroes parade, which they take a lot of pride in to celebrate the hometown heroes and veterans. They have games, rides, pro wrestling, if anyone's interested, and food, music, you can't go wrong with that, so. And aside from that, I think I put in a transfer of some funds for, to add a couple more file cabinets in my office. There's some space and I need a little bit more room to file, so if you see the transfer come through, that that's what it's in regards to, is adding two additional file cabinets, and of course, I mean, I had the lady that did the furniture when we built the jail or the center, and it's, it's to match those, so. Am I missing anything? All right, I won't take any more of your time, but that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Ricky and Casey are down there, I think we got a little business to attend with. These two, huh?
Whatever, you're in charge.
We've done some interviews and we're willing to appoint Casey Jones as a new VSO with Rick's retiring, it was celebrated last Friday. Commend you for your years of service and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Then, same to, at the same time, we wanna turn around and rehire you as a van driver, if it will help us out. So, with that, I've entertained a motion for each of these two appointments and list.
Let's take Casey first.
Take Casey first.
I'll, I'll make a motion to hire Casey as the VSO.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, to hire Casey as a VSO, carries three oh.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna say, he was a county employee, so do we need to do the rehire? We always gotta have a rehire for a new employee, so you want that done too? So, I'll make a motion to rehire Casey Jones.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, to rehire Casey as a VSO, all in favor? Carries three oh.
And then we'll go to Rick, Rick Fouts, as everybody knows, he is retired as the VSO guy officially last Friday. He is willing to stay on and maybe do some driving and help Casey a little bit. So, we'll have to do a rehire, because he was a county employee, get permission to rehire him, so I'll make the motion to rehire him.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, to rehire Fouts through the Veteran Service Office as a driver, so, all in favor? Carries three oh.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're, like I say, thanks for your years of service.
Just let us know where you stand on a start date and work with Rick a little bit and jack, acclimate it, whatever we need to do.
Yes, sir, I was planning on starting next Monday, if that's good with you guys.
You wanna start next Monday?
Yes, sir.
Everything goes through Christina Haas, HR, you know, your keys, anything you need to know, hire, show us some paperwork for you to do. So, get in touch with her as soon as you can.
Yeah, Casey, just call Christina tomorrow and set up a time and we'll get the paperwork done.
So, next Monday will be the day, what's, what's the day, the next Monday, have I got?
Yeah.
The what?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, okay, thank you, Casey.
Sir, you. Okay. Jerry.
Good evening. Got a little graph for you guys, some information. There we go.
Thank you.
You can see our graph, it's current, it's effective through September fourteenth. You can see that this year's been much busier than last year. In fact, we're almost up to last year's total final from December thirty-first with sixty families that we've helped. Last year, we had sixty-eight families that we helped, so it's been a rougher year in many ways for many people. So far, Fulton County has lost one hundred and thirty-three people total for the whole year. Of that, sixty-one females and seventy-two males. We have sixty quarter calls out of that, so that would be forty-five percent of anybody that dies in Fulton County that our team has investigated and helped their family. This time last year, this date, we had forty-four families we'd served, so we're already up to sixty, so it's exponentially more than what it was last year. Of those totals, the manner of death, accidents, we've had seven. Sadly, we've had four motor vehicle accidents, one off-road vehicle, one ground level fall where someone broke their hip and then passed away about a week or ten days later from that. And then we also had another ground level fall where someone was trying to disembark from their boat and fell between the boat and the pontoon and broke some ribs and had other traumatic injuries that caused their death. We've had two people take their lives, both were by asphyxia, one undetermined, and right now, forty-six natural. We have four autopsies that are pending with manner and cause, just awaiting those results. We have conducted fourteen toxicology tests this year, and then there's been seventeen toxicology tests conducted by the pathologist. So, we've also had seventeen autopsies this year, which is more than we've ever had, but we've had very many people, children, young adults, people in their twenties, and I will tell you, it's surprising that we've even had people in their mid-thirties and their body size might be of average, and they have occluded arteries around the coronary. I mean, it's unbelievable to me, because they're not, you know, we wouldn't have known that without an autopsy. And of the autopsies, we've had ten males and seven females. On some other things that been going on in our office, the environmental inspector came by, Wyatt Dyson with the Indiana Department of Health, Fulton County, and checked all of our systems, and it was a green light on that. He gave us a nice letter, and we passed, so we're proud of that. We were part of the nickel plate trail parade, honored to do that and see everybody. And like Brittany said, in a couple of weeks, the big heart, the small town with the big heart, we're heading over there to be in Kewana for that parade as well. We've done some continuing education. Margot, John, and Gail went to Marshall County for SUDI, that's sudden unexpected infant deaths. They did that a few weeks ago, and then more recently, John and I went to Howard County for just a general. There was three different topics that the Indiana State Police went over relative to investigations and things like that that will help us and benefit us and benefit the county. So, we're chugging along, moving along, and just wanted to give you our statistics and let you know that we've been busy, that we're always here to help and available at all times.
Sounds good.
So, all right.
Thank you much, we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Jerry, one thing curious, you said there was, what, seventeen that had the carotid arteries and things around the heart? Did they give any explanation why?
Poor di- no, but I will tell you, it's like poor diet is a lot of it. I mean, I hate to say it, but people are eating junk, they're not eating as much vegetables and fruits and things like that. Now, there wasn't seventeen people that had that, but there was like several people in their thirties, and they were not obese or anything like that, they were just average, and it's, it surprised me, I would have never guessed that. I think we had a man in his twenties too that also had that, and you wouldn't think that, but it's McDonald's. Yeah, you're right, and then it's lack of, I mean, they're trim, so, I mean, I don't know, but it's just, it is, it's the diet, the intake. Yeah.
I'm just curious.
French fries aren't good for you.
I eat a few here and there.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
My name's the easiest one. Our imaging went out, like a third of the imaging that is scheduled left the building last week, and so that's on its way, we've cleared out, Carrie's helped haul a bunch of stuff out to the trash, and we're recycling a bunch, so we have lost not a lot of weight in the attic, but a decent amount, and collections is going good, we're up to thirty-seven thousand.
Good, good.
Only a couple mad people, but.
Thank you.
Michael.
See, I'm curious, mostly just some announcements. Tomorrow, the mayor's having a groundbreaking on the first step for the industrial park, ten o'clock down there behind the Paradise Auto and Truck Plaza. He's got quite a number of people and groups coming, state people as well as local ready people and whatnot. So, that's kind of like the big news right now. We re- I canceled the RAD program last week due to the fact that it was on the week, two, two full weekdays, and people just could not come, so we're rescheduling it for November, as soon as I get some dates, I'll get those out. We do have significant progress on fourteen hundred Wabash. There's been some letter of intent, and there is a rock solid offer in the owner's hands. That's as far as I, I know of what's going on there, but gentleman wants to purchase it, fix it up, and either rent it, portions of it, or resell it at that point in time. We're still waiting on word that we have the two point five million from the ready money from the state coming in, but I don't think tomorrow would be progressing if we didn't feel comfortable with that commitment. And right now, that's about it.
Thanks, Mike. I'm gonna try to beat Don here. You guys got the reports this morning, I sent out any questions on any of those. We invoiced for seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars last month for holding out accounting inmates. Our population this morning was seventy-four inmates, ten of those being federal, thirty-three Grant County, and six DOC. The only other thing I have is we've got our jail inspection tomorrow with the state jail inspector. Any questions for Ray?
Thank you, that's great. I think he did beat you.
Yeah, I tried.
He tries. I just set my timer.
Okay. Put all the lists here, that, it's all the boxes on that and that, so. You guys see the trial authorization?
Yep. Yeah.
Any problems with those, Ryan?
Didn't see any.
Okay. We've got a whole stack of them here, so, uh, got a motion to approve them all?
I'll make a motion to approve the travel authorizations.
Second.
Okay. Motion made. All in favor? Okay, motion carries. We do have two of them. We have to pass separately. One is for, uh, mine going to the AIC and the other is for Rick's going to AIC. So those need to be.
Which one are you doing first?
Uh, let's do mine.
Okay, I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve my travel to the AIC. Motion carries 2-0. Okay, and then we've got Rick to go to the AIC.
Make a motion to approve Rick to the AIC.
I'll second it. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Carrie's 2-0. Thank you. Okay. Sign those here a little bit. We've got a transfer. We've got some of the, it's easier. We've got a transfer request and you guys see that? Any problems?
Nope. We do it separate.
Well, we've only got one transfer. We've got two appropriations.
Okay, yep. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the tra- uh, transfer.
Second.
All in favor? Carrie's 3-0. And then I got two appropriation, or three appropriation requests. Okay, see those?
Yep.
Move to approve?
I'll second them.
Okay. All in favor? Motion carries 3-0. Put it signed here in a minute. Then we got minutes from the previous three meetings. Did you get a chance to go through the minutes, the old minutes?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, let's look at first the, uh, let's see. Minutes from the last meeting, or no, back to on Sep- yeah, the last meeting, September 2nd. All in, motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to accept September meeting, or minutes, all in favor? Motion carries 3-0. Uh, for August 25th. It was an executive session.
Make a motion to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. And then this one is not actually, uh, minutes, but it is the, uh, holidays.
Did you have a third set of minutes there?
No, I do not. Unless it's stuck here. Wait a minute, it might be here. Here's one.
A little apart.
Okay. September 8th. Sorry. Uh, minutes for the executive session on September the 8th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. Okay, that's good. All three minutes and then we need to go through the, uh, the holiday hours.
Personnel.
Personnel policy, the changes.
Amendments.
Yep, the amendment for personnel policy. You guys had a chance to look all that over and read it?
Yep.
See the highlighted areas?
Brian, did you get a chance?
Yeah.
You good with it?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded to, um, pass the amendment for personnel policy. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, we got all those to sign. And now we got claims. Everybody, get a chance to look over the claims. Pretty good stack of them.
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the claims, all in favor? Carrie's 3-0. Okay, this first one's for utilities, $35,980 and 3, and 3 cents. And council on aging, uh, transfer grant, or federal transfer grant, uh, $79,720. This one is for the Wex Fleet card, $296.53. Riverboat distribution, $58,058.97. Lit distribution, $849,697.65. Miscellaneous claims, that's $347,436.74. This is for the, up through September 5th. Okay, then we got payroll docket, 322. Payroll is $34,470.74, with deductions, $135,478.60. And payroll through 95 is $300,213.44, with deductions of $113,580.84. Takes care of those. Yeah, oh, yeah, um, old business.
I don't got any. You're going to get deep later, right?
What?
The Woodlawn Hospital Board appointment.
Oh, sorry. You can get that one. I, yeah, we can get that new business.
Okay. Yep, all right. Now I have nothing.
Ryan?
Nothing. Holly?
Nothing.
Anybody out here who has old business needs to be brought forward?
I have new business.
New business? Okay. If there's no old business, we'll move on to new business. I'm going to start up here with Rick. You've got new business here.
Woodlawn Hospital Board appointment. Uh, we appointed Brandon Miller to re- uh, fill in. Served the remaining of Jim Streeters when he passed, um, and that is coming up. So I would make a motion to approve Brandon Miller for the regular board appointment that's coming up.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve Brandon Miller to, uh, new term appointment after his expires of Jim Streeters. All in favor? Carrie's 3-0. Okay?
One other thing we need to, uh, see if you guys want to give approval for time clock manager for the highway clerk?
I think it's, at one discussions, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to approve time clock manager for the highway clerk.
Motion made and seconded. The highway for the timing clock, all in favor? Carrie's 3-0.
Other than that, I'm done.
Okay. Okay.
I'll tell you what, I'd, uh, my wife told me to send a card, but I would tell you what, I, I don't want to miss anybody that sending the card would be directly to that person or the person. I just want to thank everybody publicly for all that you've done for the meeting on the retirement. Everybody here just was super and I don't want to miss anybody and say thank you to the full of the county public and, uh, the, all the people I've worked with. That's all I had to say.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I know. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other new business? Uh, one just comment. I went this last week with the Soil and Water District through the river rafting, through Arrowhead. And Megan was extremely excited because Caston had 100 kids. They said it was the largest group of kids they ever had, especially from one school. We had 14 rafts and had a great learning experience and, uh, they, I know, I appreciate it and they did too with the opportunity, so making good use. Anybody else? If not, I hear motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for adjournment?